You're ready? Sarah's ready. Paul, we're going to begin the meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board Meeting of May 9, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media as well as by the Planning Department. I would ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices at this time. The format for tonight's evening is any parties wishing to offer comments and testify on matters before the Board must approach the podium and state their name and address for the record. The applicant or their representative will address the Board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. The members of the Board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. The Chair will then ask if there's any elected or appointed town officials who wish to comment on the letter. That would include any written comments that have been already provided. Following questions and comments from any elected officials, the Chair will open up the hearing to members of the public to speak either against or in favor of the proposal, and that would also include any written comments. All comments or questions of applicants should go through the Chair. And following that, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to address any issues that might have come up from the public or from the Board and make a final statement. The Board will then consider either continuing the public hearing or closing the public hearing and moving to deliberations, or moving to table deliberations to another meeting. Okay. That being said, we have a request for a continuance on case number 23-02, special permit extension from 973 University Avenue. This is continued from 11, April 11, 2023, and asking the continuance till June 6. And the letter stated that they were waiting on our peer review to finish his report.
Correct. So they did a site visit last week, and they're working on the report now. They anticipate having something into us by next week, so the June 6 date is appropriate.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that? If not, is there a motion to continue to June 6, 2023, at 7:00 at the Norwood Senior Center, also be available on GoToMeeting?
Still moved.
As moved by Mary Kate, a second?
Second.
Second, and by Shannon. Paul, we're continuing case number 2302, 973 University Avenue. There's been a motion and a second. Are you in favor of the continuance?
Yes.
Rachel?
Abstaining.
Rachel's abstaining. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. That is continued. Thank you. Our next case is case number 2309, a variance for 241 Pleasant Street. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on May 9, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the request of Edward Musto regarding property located at 241 Pleasant Street, MAP 4, Block 18, Lot 2, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general residence district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a variance under zoning bylaw Section 3.1.5.8.3 to construct in addition to the existing single-family residence that would convert the structure to a two-family residence that exceeds the maximum allowable floor area. Any zoning relief that may be required in accordance to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the Board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the Board. Plans are on file with this application, the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and may be requested by emailing cped@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Mr. Hearn, representing...
Representing... Good afternoon. Excuse me.
Just before you begin, I don't know if you saw the email from the Building Commissioner.
Yes, and I think we... I've talked to Sarah about that. I think we can respond on that.
Okay, great. And just, I just want, so the public knows, I just want to read that because we're also reviewing a different section of the zoning code. So we received a email today from our Building Commissioner, Gary Pelletier. It says, "Mike, Sarah, after reviewing this application," and the application he is speaking to is the one before us, "in a request for relief, it is my opinion that the applicant would also need relief under 4.1.2 footnote 1, which requires 7,500 square foot per dwelling unit." Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is David Hearn Jr. I am an attorney with offices in 30 Wallpole Street in Norwood. I'm here this evening representing 241 Pleasant Street LLC, which is the owner of the property of 241 Pleasant Street here in Norwood. With me this evening is Edward Musto, who is one of the principals of that limited liability company. This is a matter that is probably familiar to most of you. We've had a bit of discussion on it recently. But by way of a little bit of back history on it, in 2019, Mr. Musto came before the Board for relief, asking to do the same thing as he's now asking to do, which is to get the necessary relief for the conversion of the existing house at 241 Pleasant Street to a two-family house. The house at 241 Pleasant Street is a house that was built about 1817. It is, we understand from various documents available in the town, perhaps the only house left in town that is, has two, where two sides are completely brick. The gable ends of the house are composed of brick, so it has a certain historic significance. The house is old. It's not in great shape. My client would like to add on to it and convert it to a two-family. In many circumstances, a house of this age, any house predating July 21, 1927, located within the general residence district as this is, can be converted as a matter of right to a two-family house if it has the, on the lot, the area required for a single-family house, which is 10,000 square feet. We have a greater area than that. The difficulty in this case is that the provision under the Table of Use Regulations that allows for the conversion limits the amount of the increase in habitable area for this particular type of conversion to not more than 50% of the existing house. And so as this house now stands, the proposal is to increase it by more than 50%. So it would not, without some relief, it doesn't fit within the provisions of the use tables. And the flip side of that is if we had 15,000 square feet, we'd be able to do it without any limitation on floor area. So whichever way we look at it, it requires relief. And Mr. Pelletier's letter, which I became aware of only 15, 20 minutes ago, raises the question that, you know, make sure we get the relief. And as I said, there are two ways of looking at it. The 3.1.6 has a footnote that allows this conversion on 10,000 square feet but limits the floor area. So one way to look at it is that you would be asked to give relief, effectively dimensional relief, which is what makes it a variance, from the limitations on the footnote. Another way to look at it is that if you give relief from the normal requirement of 15,000 square feet for a two-family house, 7,500 feet per unit, we accomplish the same thing. So it's really two ways to look at. And in 2019, when this matter came before the Board, the Board granted the necessary variance. And on that basis, Mr. Musto pulled a building permit, which was extended a few times. He did some work on the property. Mr. Pelletier had some issues with whether the variance was still in effect, and as you know, we had hearings on that several weeks ago. And the Board ruled against the continuance of the variance. But we took the comments of the Board as an invitation to come back and apply for a variance at this point. With respect to the various issues that you've got to think about, the conditions that need to be met, I would submit to you that this is a unique property. The structure itself is unique in its age, in its design, in style, the fact that it is reported to be the only one of this type left in the town. And you may consider that as unusual conditions affecting the structures. And so we'd ask you to look at that. If the applicant is not able to, not able to get the relief that is being asked for and not able, therefore, to convert this to a two-family, there would be a hardship, financial or otherwise, in that he either is left with a house that is not really up to current standards and would take an awful lot of money to bring up to current standards. And really, it might tend to lead to demolition of the house. I'm not saying that would happen, but that's a possibility. It gets to the point where it's putting too much money into an old house that can't be updated. The solution that he has is to make it a two-family, and then you are able to put it to a better use and derive sufficient income out of it to maintain it and keep it going. As I said, the alternative is he could knock the house down and build a single-family house without asking anybody's permission on that because the lot does conform to the area requirements for a single-family, a single-family house in that district. We think that the relief requested can be granted without any derogation from the intent of the bylaw because it would help to preserve an older house, a very old house in the town, one of the oldest still there and in use. It would provide housing at a time when we really need housing, and we don't think it would work any detriment. It would be keeping, in keeping with the principles and purposes of the bylaw, but not really derogating from the intent of the bylaw in that it would allow for and encourage updating of housing, safer housing, and appropriate use of the land in a neighborhood that has a mix of houses, some single, many two-family, including the condominium next door that, where all of them are two-unit townhouses. Mr. Musto is happy to answer any questions related to this, but that essentially is the case. So we would ask for relief with respect to the normal area requirement of 15,000 square feet. We have 10,770 square feet now. And as I said, another way to look at it is to look at the, and I don't disagree with Mr. Pelletier. I wish I'd known about it sooner. We didn't view it that way, but I was with him today at 2:00. It's a...
Just on that point of information, I spoke with Mr. Pelletier at 3:30, and him and I went over this, so I don't want you to think that he hid something from you. This did not come up until 3:30 today, when I sat down with Mr. Pelletier.
That's all right. That's fine. And when I get a hit tonight, I ask Sarah if there's any more correspondence, and yes, there was.
Well, I just don't want anyone to believe that Mr. Pelletier tried to hide something from you.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
When you made the statement that you met with him at 2:00.
Yeah.
There was a suggestion there, but we'll move on.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. And so, you know, we're asking again, relief. And you could, I think you can look at it two ways. Maybe the best way would be, if you were inclined to grant it, to look at it both ways. Grant a variance with respect to the normal 15,000-foot requirement, and also look at it as giving relief with respect to the limitation on floor area. I don't think you really need that if you go with the 15,000 feet. But another way to look at it is if you went with the, this be counter to what Mr. Pelletier is recommending, and perhaps we ought to follow his recommendation, how to look at it. Either way, we're asking for variance relief. We think it is appropriate here, considering the uniqueness of the property, considering the hardship that would flow if Mr. Musto was not able to redevelop this and add another housing unit that would make it more suitable, more valuable. He'd like to put a family member in the new space if he could, and I don't think it violates the intent or purpose of the bylaw, or would cause any real harm to the neighborhood, to the public good, or anything like that. It is not a project that would put any strain on traffic concerns or utility services or anything like that in the neighborhood, just adding one more unit in a neighborhood full of two-family and single-family houses. So that's really it, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, in terms of my initial presentation. Mr. Musto, again, is here and can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Anything from the Board? Any questions from the Board?
I had some questions, Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead. I recognize Shannon.
So I know that you're here because you're over the 50%. How far over the 50%? I didn't see any square footage associated...
Practically doubling the square footage. I think, I know that the building permit was issued referenced 1,400 square feet.
For the new addition?
Is that right, Ed?
Yes. At one time, the building was double the size of what's there.
Yeah, let me, I should have mentioned that. When Mr. Musto first acquired the property, there was a big L off the back of the property, off the house. He was concerned about the safety of that, the condition of that, and he took it down. If he had left it up, we probably wouldn't be here.
A big L, as in like the house's structure?
The extension of the house. I think I have...
Because the plan... Yeah, the plan that we have here just has the two square footprints, but it doesn't say anything about the square footage of the existing building or the proposed square footage of the addition at all.
Right around 2004, 2003, 2004, who is about twice the size that is there now.
But what are the proposed square footage of the new addition, and...
The assessor shows the habitable space as 1,368 square feet. The building permit that was issued on this project had a round number of 1,400 square feet for the addition that he proposes. So that's why I said he's effectively doubling the habitable space of the house if he's allowed to build this. And that was shown on the plan of record. And I'll make one other point, if I may, on the plan of record. One of the necessary elements of this project is the relocation of the sewer line that runs through the project. That's been shown on the plan all the way through as a necessary element of it. So I just wanted to remind the Board on that. We don't need relief on that. We do need a permit from the Department of Public Works if we go forward with this. But the only place that makes sense to build the addition of the house is where a sewer line that Mr. Musto had previously installed for another project comes through. It can be relocated, as shown on the plan, to follow roughly the line of the fence as it comes out toward Pleasant Street. But thank you for the reminder, Ed.
So I guess point of clarification, because this is a new application for a new variance, I think it would be, I mean, I don't know that we, I would want to just be referencing old plans associated with a different application, and I don't, like, there's no renderings associated with what you would be doing for the exterior of the historic structure as well as what the new structure would look like? I feel like that type of information would be helpful for this.
It'll be a clapboard siding on the exterior.
Of both the existing and the new structure?
Well, on the proposed new structure.
Okay.
We're gonna, there's gonna be some finagling on how to connect the new structure to the existing structure because the existing structure, both gable ends are brick.
Right.
So when we, when we, when you build the new structure, we're just gonna have to decide how we're gonna connect the two together.
Right. Okay.
But I guess, would it be fair to say that you tried to mimic the style of the existing house with the addition?
Yes, well, yes. The style is basically the same. I think the existing house is 38 feet by 18 feet. And the new one will be, I'd like it to be the same dimensions, 38 feet by 18 feet.
The plan you submitted with the application, sorry to interrupt.
Yep, John, go ahead. Go ahead.
The plan that was submitted shows, it doesn't show the square footage of the existing house, but it shows the proposed addition as 18 by 48.
That 48 is a typographical error. We had corrected that previously. That's the same plan as we've used before. We're not proposing any change on that. That is, that was corrected, but it was a typo, and then he yet went through on the prior decision. It is really 38 feet.
Okay. Could you provide a copy of that for our record?
I'll dig that out. I don't have the full file with me this evening, but there was one. And nothing changed in terms of proposed layout from what we had previously had approved. And in answer to your question, Ms. Greenwell, so that plan of the lot with the proposed addition is the same. Your question about what's the building going to look like if we build it? We don't have a rendering as such, I guess, but Mr. Musto said that it would be pretty much mimicking what's there now in terms of claveward, and it would be offset a little bit on the attachment.
Yes, but I think there is a plan showing the elevations and the floor plans of the proposed existing as it connects to the new structure.
Not that we have in this package, to my knowledge?
The building plans?
Yes.
The building, building plans he's referring to, building permit plans.
It shows the elevations. It shows the siding. Yes.
Okay, so, right. So I'm saying, I think because this is a new, I did not at least sit on the Board that had previously approved the variance, so I don't have the benefit of seeing the plans the first time. But I think we would like, generally like to see more information about the square footage and also about renderings and elevations of both what would be there and what you're proposing as a structure before being able to make a decision on something like this.
We can get you the, we can get you the, some elevations to show the exterior rendering. Yeah.
And then the other question, I know that the existing home was listed in the CPC and has, you know, historic significance in the town, and I know because of the brick siding, so it seems like some of the historic character would be modified if you're attaching on the side of it. So this would be an alteration of the existing historic structure.
It would necessarily be that. Yeah.
Okay. That was everything that I had right now. Mr. Chair?
Yep, thank you. Just a point of information before I move on to the other members. The plan that was approved in 2019 was the plan that is before us dated 8/27/2019, showing 18 by 48. So that's what's before us right now. And so if you're telling us that this isn't the plan, and to Ms. Greenwell's point, we don't have any elevations, we don't have any floor plans, I'm assuming it's a two-story?
A two-story.
So the plan that got approved in 19 was an increase of 126% above the present house. And that was the plan that was approved, so, and was recorded at the Registry of Deeds because Book 37234, page 400. And you recorded it, Mr. Hearn?
I didn't record the plan. I recorded, Mr. Chairman...
Well, reference to the plan, so just, I just want the clarification cleared up that the plan that was approved before was the plan that shows the addition being 18 by 48. Now you're telling us that this isn't the plan, but we don't have the plan that you want to show us.
Mr. Chairman, let me explain to you. If you look at that decision that you've just referred to, and go to page 2, second paragraph, it calls out that the agreed dimensions were 38 by 18. Mr. Glossa made a change on the plan but neglected, and the Board approved it, to change the 48 to a 38. But the actual vote was for 38 by 18, and that plan is actually a scaleback of what we first proposed. So that's what was...
This is what it says, and this is the plan that was recorded.
That plan's not on record. The decision is, and that's what we based it on.
Okay, so where's the plan for us that shows this is 18 by 38?
We can, I mean, I, if I may, see the copy you have.
And this was the copy that got presented?
Yeah, I called out the typo here. That's my circling there.
No, that's not your circling. All those writings are my writings, Mr. Hearn.
This one, sir, is mine.
Okay.
I have that.
Oh, yeah. You know what? I stand corrected. You are correct. But then why did you submit this, this body of application?
Because we were asking for the exact same relief on the same property, and it seemed wasteful to try to engage an engineer to draw a plan that was going to say the exact same. I cleared it with Ms. Bouchard before we filed it. So we're asking for 38 by 18, the same as on the 2019 decision, and that's what the square footage is based on. We realized, we asked for, we were thinking of a larger one originally, but unfortunately, when Mr. Glossa scaled it down, he missed the 48, and, and so, well, we agreed as part of the decision it would be 38, and that's what we have.
So it's 100% increase, then?
I'd say 100%.
Says they mirror each other if they're both 38 by 18, they mirror each other. Okay?
Yeah, I agree. Based upon the assessor's records, based upon our understanding in the building permit, it's essentially 100% increase. And that's why we're here.
Okay. And you're also here to convert it to a two-family, per the Building Commissioner.
Excuse me?
You're also here to convert it to a two-family, per the Building Commissioner. I think you need both.
Well, we're here, we're here, we could convert it as a matter of right to a two-family if we had not exceeded the 50% limitation, as a matter of right. You don't need this, you only need 10,000 square feet for a house of that age in the general residence district.
But now you need 15,000.
We need either 15,000 or relief from Section 3.1.6. Either way, it'll get us to the same place. But if the building inspector believes that a better way to approach it is to say, give relief on the normal 15,000, that's fine. We understand that. What got us here is that there's a proposed addition that is greater than 50% of the existing building. As Mr. Musto mentioned, if he had not taken down the L, that portion of the house, he probably wouldn't even needed any relief because the lot was big enough, under the exception under 3.1.6 footnote 1. And also, it, if you took the square footage of that, what he was proposing really would not have exceeded, we don't think would have exceeded the 50%. So that's where, it's like, the, if, you know, so much of we look back on and say, I wish I hadn't done it that way. If he'd left that L up, but he thought it was a dangerous condition, so he took it down, left it up, we wouldn't be here, wouldn't be bothering you folks with this. He would have had, he would have been able to build it as a matter of right without any variance.
I don't want to hold anyone else up, but when you read this, it says, "No interior enlargement is made in which, together with any changes during the preceding five years, increases the gross area of the house more than 50%." So it says the interior enlargement. This isn't an interior enlargement. This is a second home being built on the house.
Interior enlargement means habitable space. So if you had a house, say you had a house that was built prior to July 21, 1927, this was by 110 years, and it was in the general residence zone, and you had 10,000 square feet, which is the requirement for a single-family house, the exception under 3.1.6 would allow you to add on to that house to increase the interior habitable space of that house by up to 50% and do it as a matter of right. We go over that threshold, and that's what brings us to the zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah, it is an exception, and it's only in the general residence district, and it's only for the houses that existed before zoning came into being in Norwood in July 1927.
Okay, all right. Sorry, members. Mary Kate?
Thank you. Are there any soil conditions on this lot that require the building to be built according to the way it's shown on the plan?
Any soil conditions? You mean in that location?
Yes. Either on the property, on the location, that requires it to be built as shown?
Well, in terms of the layout, you can't go to the right.
Right.
And if you go to the back of the existing house, what happens?
Well, if you went behind the existing house, you, it would be like having two cars double park, one, you know, one behind the other. I mean, it just, it would look kind of, it would, I don't think it would make sense to do that.
Off here?
I think that's what they're suggesting.
Are you asking what's going on?
Behind the house? Is that your suggestion here?
Or just soil conditions generally?
There's ledge on the lot. Okay, that's one of the biggest soils. When I built the properties behind it, it was, it was all ledge. There was a lot of blasting going on. Where we're proposing it, there's, to the best of my knowledge, when we put the sewer line in, there was no ledge there. So it makes the most sense to build the unit and attach it to the existing unit that's there. And in that particular location, there was no ledge.
The result would be, I think, that you'd have, as he proposes it... The result would be, I think, that you'd have, as he proposes it, a double house facing Pleasant Street, as opposed to a house behind a house that wouldn't be facing the road, facing the fence and the condo complex, the two places. So this is the most, from his point of view, and I see his point of view in this, the most logical place to put an addition to the house. Going up, going out in an open area, and the lot is, is open in that area.
I think that answers the questions I had. Thank you.
And then the reason, how the proposed unit is set back, and the purpose for the setback is to maintain the requisite zoning setbacks. The, I think it's fifteen feet, twenty feet on the front edge, it's ten or fifteen on the side yard. So that's, that's why they're kind of staggered a little bit, if you will.
Great, thank you.
Rachel?
Thank you. Just to echo what some of my colleagues have said, this is a standalone application. You know, we're not interpreting or trying to enforce an existing permit or reviewing materials related to prior applications. I do have a question. You submitted that the structure itself is a unique condition that would merit the application of a variance here. I'm curious how that condition, because it has to, owing to that condition, that circumstance of that unique structure, which I concede if that's the only one like that here in town. But it, this, this addition is not accommodating around the unique nature of the structure. It seems to actually interfere with the unique nature of the structure, with the gable ends being the brick. And the addition is being added on to the gable end, so it will actually remove what makes the structure unique. The uniqueness of the structure isn't the basis of what is the basis of this hardship application. I'm just trying to match the uniqueness of the structure to connecting it to the basis of the hardship that's being asserted.
Well, one, one way to look at it is, the unique building may be lost if it can't be improved in a way that makes economic sense. So, you know, you could knock it down tomorrow and put up a single family. But people want to preserve older houses, one way to preserve them is to adapt them to today's needs. And one way to do that is to allow the addition to the house as proposed. Now, I don't disagree that necessarily some of that brick gable end could be obscured by the proposed attachment of the house, the addition of the house on the left side, as we're looking at it from the street. Very often, when you're working on historic structures, there's going, there are going to be changes, and not every feature can be preserved. Part of that feature there would be preserved, and the other side would be completely preserved, which is very visible as you come down Pleasant Street. So this, this house is, in the eyes of many, unique. It's listed in the report that I referenced as perhaps the only known house of that type left in the town. It is, and it is, I made reference to it, the Town and Norwood Community Preservation Plan, a needs assessment from September of two thousand and nineteen. It is believed to be the sole remaining building having two gable ends constructed of brick. So that is a unique condition here that doesn't apply to any other house in the district, and we believe not any other house in the town. In order to, a way to preserve that unique structure is to allow the adaptation that my client is looking for in a way that makes it more suitable to today's needs. You know, our forefathers very often didn't think about the historic value of their houses. They thought about the value of living in their houses. And there are houses all over the place who are added on and added on and added on, and they're old. And they may be historic in some respect, but, you know, a lot of them get lost. They just get knocked down and something newer get built. This is a case where there's an opportunity to preserve the only one of this type of house in the town. If the relief is granted, it would allow for adaptation that is more suited to today's needs, and from an economic point of view, also, it would argue for keeping this old structure. By itself, from an economic point of view, and even a utility point of view, it doesn't have the same value as it might if it can be preserved by adding on to it, protected by adding on to it. So I think that's a way to look at it.
And similarly, the, I think we have kind of gone through our questions on the plan itself, but conceptually, it sounds like the house size would be roughly doubling. So what is the, what is the associated need? Like, how does that resolve the hardship here, as opposed to a smaller addition to resolve the hardship being proposed to put it to the requested use? That is a little bit closer to the, as of right, addition, less, something within the fifty percent? This is really doubling the-
If you go, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's, go ahead.
If you cut it to fifty percent, seven hundred square feet, it's not going to be attractive to anybody to live in. Not going to be big enough. You know, it is effect doubling, it's doubling the size of the remaining portion of the house. Used to be a much bigger house.
Yeah, I mean, we have to make the determination based on the structure as it stands.
I agree, I agree. You know, if, we, Mr. Musto and I have had this discussion. We don't get to count what used to be there. If it was still there, it'd be a lot easier, but it isn't. They took it down for reasons that made sense.
Yeah.
But if, you know, if you suggest that, why don't you build a house that's, an addition to the house at seven hundred square feet, it's not going to add enough value to justify the exercise. It's not going to be a big enough unit for somebody to want to live in comfortably. And it's, in terms of the economics of it, you know, you generate rent that pays for the upkeep, the taxes and everything else on a house like this. Adding seven hundred square feet, or even something less than what he's proposing, really doesn't get you far. Not a bad size, fourteen hundred square feet. It's also not giant by today's standards. And so if you're going to add on to the house, yeah, it is doubling it. But from his point of view, if he can't get this, then, you know, the hardship is that the house is just not going to, doesn't pay for itself, it doesn't, and it may not survive. And I'm not saying that as a threat or anything like that, it's just the practicalities of this. It's why he's been trying so hard to get this house, get this house, so that it can be preserved by adding on to it over the last several years. I agree, this is a new case. But I think he's shown his efforts, that he wanted to do something with this property for years.
I think your client wants to say something, Mr. Hearn?
We, as of right-
Just name and address for the record.
Edward Musto, thirty-six Bull Hill Drive.
In what town?
Oh, Westwood.
Okay, thank you.
As of right, we could add on the equivalent footprint of the existing house. We can add on the eighteen feet by thirty-eight feet, single story, ranch. I don't know if that makes sense, but we could, we could surely meet the fifty percent rule by doing that. The need here is for a living space on the second floor, bedrooms. I'm doing it for a family member, okay, who currently lives in Norwood. And so we've had a couple setbacks, I'm hoping we can overcome that, but that's always an option. We can add, add the, the exact same size footprint to the existing building and come back, is it five years down the road, we can come back again and seek an increase?
The preceding five years.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, it would just, you know, it would just save a little bit of time. And it would save a little bit of inconvenience to my son and to my child, so.
Okay, Rachel, anything else?
Nothing right now, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, do you have anything? Paul? Can you unmute yourself, Paul?
Hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, Paul, this is Paul Easie.
Yes, thank you. I guess, Mr. Hearn, I have a question. I remember the case back in two thousand and nineteen. My question is, are you asking for, what relief did you request for, did the applicant request in two thousand and nineteen? And does it differ from the request this evening?
In two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Chairman, in answer to Mr. Easie's question, it was presented as, in, in two ways. We asked for a special permit under sections three point one point five and three point one point six for the conversion of a single-family dwelling on a lot needing current lot requirements for a single, conversion, single to a two on a lot meeting the requirements for a single-family dwelling. And, but it, but we need relief because it would have a gross floor area greater than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the existing dwelling. We also requested a variance to allow the conversion having a gross floor area greater than allowed as a matter of right. That's how the board handled it, and that's what was approved. The variance relief was granted, the special permit relief was deemed to be unnecessary at that point, once the variance was granted. And on that, we went forward. The current building commissioner says, well, he thinks we need the addition, the, to look at it also as relief from the fifteen thousand square feet. That's another way of looking at it, and this board has the authority to grant whatever relief it deems is appropriate and necessary for a project, if it's going to approve the project. So that's what, where we are right now.
I see, so, I, I see what you're saying. So between two thousand and nineteen and today, how come, what happened? What did the applicant do?
Well, Mr. Easie, we were not involved in the recent proceedings, but there was a decision made by the building commissioner, Mr. Pelletier, that the variance had lapsed. And we appealed that to the board. The board sustained the decision of the building inspector. It is now the subject of a land court appeal. But at the time that we were here discussing that, there was also a suggestion that maybe we come back and ask for a variance. To protect my client's rights, we filed an appeal in the land court with respect to the board's decision sustaining the commissioner. But we're here, and if the relief were to be granted and take effect, then we would have no further reason to conduct the land court litigation, and we would be in a position to dismiss it. But we had to, because of the short timeframe that's allowed to take an appeal in the land court or superior court from a decision of the board, we had to file the appeal to protect my client's rights. So we've done that.
So that's, I see, so that's pending now?
That's pending. We've, we advised town council at the beginning of the case that if the board saw fit to grant the variance relief that we're asking for now, we would happily dismiss the land court case. And town council, as I understand it, understands that that is the posture of the case for the time being. Nobody is taking any really active steps in the land court while this is pending.
And just one more question. And how is the house being used today?
Mr. Musto?
It's a, it's a rental for a mother and her daughter.
That's the old part, the existing?
The existing house is a rental for the tenant. The tenants are a mother and a daughter, young daughter.
We can't hear Mr. Easie, I think he's talking.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
No, no, I mean, that answer, I just had a little loose connection, but it's all good. You've answered my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything at this time, I might later. Is there any, any pointer elected official that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, we'll open it up. We did have a letter from Ms. Howard, but I see her here. But we'll, without reading your letter, all the members have received it, and we'll enter into the record. And I know you want to approach the podium, and please, name and address for the record, approach the podium, thank you. If you're more comfortable sitting down, Ms. Howard, that's fine, too.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the zoning board. Two forty-one Pleasant Street is really one of the most important homes in Norwood. And it's on the, first of all, I have to tell you, I'm chair of the Norwood Historical Commission, so I'm speaking on behalf of the commission.
And just your address to them, Ms. Howard, please.
Oh, two hundred Nichols, and I'm also a town meeting member from District Three.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you. So it's on the list of the top one hundred homes and buildings in the town of Norwood. It's also registered, not registered, but it's on a list at the Massachusetts Historical Commission. But it is appropriate to be registered on the National Register because it was built in eighteen seventeen. It's two hundred and five years old. It is beautiful, beautiful home. The reason that, and as was stated, it is the only two-sided brick home in Norwood. And that's the way it has been since it was built. So if an addition were placed on it, it would sort of lose the integrity and the significance, which I wrote in my letter to you, of its historic designation. But I just wanted to say, I think it was about twenty years ago, I think the applicant also came to the zoning board at that time for a similar request. What happened at that time, because I was there at that hearing, that on the right of the home is the area where the applicant built a condo. I think it's a condo complex. And what happened, he took part of the land that had been appropriated, or that was part of the two forty-one Pleasant Street, and that's where the swell comes. So he took part of the plan, and that's why it was denied at that time. If this application was denied recently, and as we heard from the building commissioner, can you kindly enlighten me as to why there is not a two-year waiting period from that denial to?
Yeah, that was approved in nineteen, and then the building commissioner deemed that they had not acted on the variance or the building permit.
Expiration, yeah.
So that is a completely different matter, so that does not fall under that two-year statute. This is a brand-new application, and that would not fall under that statute.
Oh, really?
No, no.
Thanks, thanks for telling me. I think that, for all the reasons that I stated in the letter, this is so important, it really, really, really is. And I wish that the applicant had taken much better care of such an important piece of property. I think that that's what I, I said. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Anyone else here? Yes, please, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Nancy Cota Pachur. I live at two fifty-one Pleasant Street. You're looking at two forty-one Pleasant Street, I'm to the left of the property. And the first time we all met, I had no objections whatsoever in what Eddie Musto wanted to do. I felt it would be an improvement to the property. However, over the years, a lot of things have changed, and I've tried to address it with it. And my major issue right now is, I'm concerned about the water situation. I'm at a high table water level as it is, and I will be sitting on lakeside property. That's my major, major issue. And I do, I've- And I do, I've had to address some issues, housekeeping issues with Ed, but it went on deaf ears. So, that's another major issue I have, that if he pursues to build, he's not going to do what I had kindly asked him to do. When two of the storms, the fences came down on both sides, I'm holding it up by two-by-fours. And on the right hand, on the opposite side of the fence, it's like a gully. It's like a three-foot gully that needed to be filled because the land was not graded properly. So, that's my major issue, is of the water table. And I'm worried about water seeping down, goes down gradually, and that's my major issue, is that any more digging is going to create a water issue with me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on go-to meeting that would like to address the board regarding this matter? Hearing, no one? Yes, Ms. Howard?
Excuse me, just one more thing.
Yes.
When a person or an applicant applies for a variance, and I think Ms. Chirrjar raised it, what the hardship is in order to grant the variance, does the applicant state the reasons important enough to overcome the requirement of the variance?
He'll have to explain this four requirements under mass general law, and one of them is regarding the hardship. And it said that must be related to the circumstances of the lot, and I think you heard some of the members ask about the soil condition, and I don't think we heard anything regarding that matter. And...
Mr. Sheehan, I grew up next to that house that was a two-family at one time, so there should be no reason why he couldn't convert it, the common structure is due back to a two-family.
Okay, hold on, okay. But there are requirements that we must find, these are facts, and we'll try to do that if this was to go forward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
And you can have this if you'd like, later on, in the future, Ms. Howard.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't hear from anyone. Mr. Hearn?
Yep, I have a second. Ms. Corte-Patry mentioned there was a two-family house. It was, it was a much bigger house before Mr. Musto took down the El. It's not suitable as a two-family house as it is right now. With respect to Ms. Howard's comments about the historic value of this house, aside from the fact that our zoning bylaw really doesn't say anything about historic preservation, except in certain limitation circumstances under, I think, it's section 3.6 or 3.9. But that does not apply to this because of the size of this house. It does not, that historic structures bylaw that I in fact wrote, 3.6, requires houses having 4,000 square feet. So, other than that, our bylaw doesn't reference historic structures, doesn't hold that out as a value, or a purpose, or aim of the zoning bylaw. So, it's nice if you can do it. And it's nice if we can preserve these. I think that Ms. Howard would like it to be preserved as it is, but our laws don't require people to do that. It's more likely to be preserved if the house can be added on to. If it can't be, then it's not so likely to be preserved. So, if you want to see the house preserved, I would think one would support the application. Now, Ms. Corte-Patry's had some concerns, Mr. Musto was prepared, and was in fact previously working on a matter involving the retaining wall. I'll let him, because he has a much better knowledge of the situation, explain those concerns and what went on. As far as, I would say one more thing, Ms. Howard's statement unwarranted, I think, about the condition of the house, I don't believe she's been in it. Mr. Musto can tell us what the condition of the property was when he took it over. So, I'll leave it to him to speak to those points, and he can do it in a much better way than I can.
Well, that won't be necessary, because there's somebody living there now, so I'm assuming that it meets the code if somebody's living in that house now, so.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I understand, but we have gratuitous comments about the condition of the house, given by somebody who I don't believe has ever been in the house.
But there's someone living there, correct?
There is.
Okay. Then I would hope that as a responsible landlord, that the house meets code. And there are other ways to preserve these houses through mass save, if there's functional obsolescence regarding the insulation and the heating and ventilation and that sort of thing. But if there's someone living there, I'm going to make the assumption that it meets the code, and I don't need an explanation of what needs to be done. If it needs to be done, then the person shouldn't be living there. So, I don't think we want to get on that route. Not with me, anyway.
Well, okay, I suspect Ms. Howard was talking about something other than the interior perhaps, because I don't believe she's been in it. So, he can explain the conditions that he took over, Ed won't be much.
Sure. So, my name is Edward Musto, I live at 36 Blue Hill Drive in Westwood. I've owned that house since 1999. When I bought it, it, parts of the house were built on the ground. There was no foundation under it. The size of the house at that time was approximately 3,500 feet. It was a two-family, there's still a second electrical service that services the abandoned unit, if you will. But as far as the condition of the house, it was, it needed, it was, I'm sure it was built without permits back in 1817. So, over the years, it has gotten, it's seen a lot of use, it's gotten tired, it hasn't, it's outlived its useful life. That house has outlived its useful life, okay? It is, it is a valid rental unit, it's been approved by the Norwood Housing Authority. It gets an annual inspection, it's a safe place to live, as far as the house goes. Had I known back in 2000 that my plan was to add on to the unit, because as it came up, I probably wouldn't have torn down that additional space. But I tore it down because I saw it as a danger, so we tore it down. So, what's there today is what's left. It's a 38 by 18 brick-end colonial, built in 1817. Plan to obsolescence, maybe the place should be torn down. But in order to preserve my right to add on to it, it has to, it has to remain in place. Mrs. Corte-Patry brought up the drainage. Unfortunately, the house is on a hill, her house is downhill. I, in the last decision, I agreed I would do something to mitigate the drainage, the water runoff, which I'm still willing to do. There's two ways of doing it. I can put a retaining wall up, which is healthy expense, or I can put some drainage on the property and let the drainage, let the stormwater run off into the drainage system and percolate through the ground. As I said, that's probably the only place on the lot, as Mr. Greenwell asked, is what are the conditions there? And I stated that it's ledge. The only place on the lot that's not ledge is where I'm proposing this addition. I can still address Mrs. Corte-Patry's concern. She has, she brought up the fence, the fence is 20 years old, okay? And all the time, yeah, yeah, it's overgrown, I know, and a couple of sections of fence are missing. I don't want to say I've been a neglectful landlord, but whenever there were concerns in the house, we addressed them, we addressed the problem. I never expected this process to take this long, okay? I had some issues, I don't really want to get into them, had some surgeries. But I can address Mrs. Corte-Patry's concerns in terms of drainage. As far as what I can do as a right, I can add on the equivalent-sized footprint, the duplicate footprint, 18 feet by 38, a single-family ranch, it would give me 750 feet of space. Let's be realistic, 750 feet of space for a small family is not enough space. I need these, I need the additional space on the second floor. If I can't get that, you know, I might, I just, I might have to resort to doing something that this lady doesn't want me to do. And that maybe is, take the house down and build a new single-family there. I don't want to do that. If I can keep the single, keep the single, add a, and add a unit of living, that's my much preferred plan. But I, I, 750 feet is just not enough living space. It's like living in a garage, is what it's doing. I know that the decision's in the board's hands, concerns with the neighbors. I think we've said enough about the house. These are my desires, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Hearn?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there were concerns expressed about, questions rather, by Ms. Howard on the question of variance conditions, and I agree about your, appreciate your statement that this is not at all affected by the two-year bar, we're well over three years, three and a half years from when the last decision was issued, which was a favorable decision anyway. So, with respect to the variance conditions, this is a unique site, we're dealing with a unique structure, and the statute looks at conditions on the ground or conditions affecting structures that are unique, that do not apply generally in the neighborhood or the district in which the property is located. And I've said to you, and I'll say it again, and I think Ms. Howard agrees, this is a unique property, and there's nothing else like it in the town, and some would like to preserve. With respect to the hardship, Mr. Musto has talked about it, and I'll talk about it, that with absent the relief that is requested, the house becomes really, in the long term, not suitable. He said it's really outlived its usefulness. Yes, he can have somebody live there, but that doesn't mean that it makes sense to maintain this property for that old house that can't be enlarged to a point where you could put a second unit in there, as many of the houses in the neighborhood do have two units, as two-family houses, on Pleasant Street, on Cross Street, and all around the neighborhood. With respect to the derogation from the intent of the bylaw, I spoke to that earlier about providing housing, preserving history, even though that's not really part of the intent of the bylaw, but it would be an added benefit. The idea that the house is, that you are providing suitable housing at a time when we have a housing shortage, it is not creating any detrimental effects to the neighborhood, the neighborhood already of two-family houses and a mix. It would be an improvement on the site because a new addition would help to spruce up the entire property. Mr. Musto's expressed his willingness to make adjustments in response to Mrs. Corte-Patry's concerns about drainage. He'd already talked about that in the prior incarnation of this matter, and he's still willing to do that. We can't help the fact that she's downhill from us, but, and we could, as a matter of right, build a big house, it might lead to the same things. But he's willing to have those as conditions in any decision granting relief. So, I do understand, as Ms. Greenwell raised the issue earlier, that you'd like a little more information about what this would look like, and we could bring renderings. I'll tell you that, from what Mr. Musto said, it's anticipated to look very similar to what is there in terms of the cloud work, but if the board wants to continue this to another date to allow for submitting some renderings, and I can, I'll, we'll get a correction on that plan. I mean, it was circled, and there was a copy at 1.738, I apologize if you didn't get that copy, but the decision did call out 38 by 18, so we know what size we're looking for here. So, I think that as far as the variance conditions go, uniqueness, the hardship, it's not going to derogate from the intent of the bylaw, it's not going to harm the public good. In fact, it would be considered perhaps a benefit to the public good to allow this house to be renovated and to provide more housing. So, we'd ask you to consider that, if you want to continue the hearing to provide for us, allow us to submit renderings that Ms. Greenwell had asked for, we're happy to do that at another date. Have it continued to your next meeting, or whatever makes sense for the board. But that's, that really is what we're talking about, a unique building that can be preserved with an addition. Without it, not so sure that it can be in the long run. And economic circumstances might dictate something else on that site. As a matter of right, you could build it for single, but it would be a bigger single, be newer, more up-to-date and all that. So, that's where it is, Mr. Chairman, I think we've covered, I've referenced all of the conditions, and we'd ask the board to consider it, but we'd also ask the board that maybe in view of Ms. Greenwell's request, we're happy to accede to, to allow us to continue the matter, to produce the renderings. And we would have, and by that, you're talking about, I want to be clear in this, exterior renderings. We're not proposing to, we have floor plans anyway.
We'd like to see some type of floor plans.
Sorry, what purpose?
Because I asked them. And have elevations.
Well, that's what it means, the renderings show the elevations, yeah.
My question is, you mentioned knock it down and make us say, build a single-family.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you just renovate that property? Because it does go back to 1817. And I know Mr. Musto wants a family member to move in there, during the renovations, the housing authority can work with that tenant there and find another location for that tenant, and Mr. Musto can preserve that building, because it is a beautiful building on Pleasant Street, it kind of stands out there, and have a single-family, and maybe enlarge it out to the back so that it's no big. If that's the intent here, is to find housing for his family, or a member of his family, I certainly think that would really satisfy his need, and I think it would satisfy all of the citizens of Norwood. This house is listed on the Mass Historical Society.
I'm sorry, sir, not national.
Massachusetts, yes, Massachusetts. And there, it's not as easy to knock down, because I just went through this one in Clanpoint and Ashland Street in Dorchester. But that being said, I think--
This is not a protected house, sir.
Well, that house wasn't either, and that's still standing. But that being said, if the need is to provide housing for a family member, I think we can reach that and renovate that house so it has the same look and bring the interior up to today's code. I've found many of these, I did one in Click Ashland Street in Dorchester, it was 156 years old, and you can all look at it, 15-17 Ashland Street. But that being said, what are the wishes of the board?
I move to close the public hearing and move to discussion of the board.
Okay, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, as I understand, this is not a request, then?
Well, there might be a request, Mr. Hearn.
If the public hearing is closed, then you can't submit plans.
Well, we can still submit the plans, I believe.
That's giving of evidence. I would not want that to be an appellate issue.
All right, well, we have a motion to close the public hearing then, so is there a second? If you want to see plans, or do we want to close the hearing and go to a vote? What are the wishes of the board?
I agree with Attorney Hearn, and to the extent that there would be a request to have more comprehensive plans for our consideration, I think it would also be helpful for more information about our ability to consider historical aspects, as they don't seem to relate to zoning. This doesn't qualify as like a subdivision of a larger historical home. This doesn't qualify as like a subdivision of a larger historical home, and that type of information, both as a zoning issue and half the creation of the nexus here, would be helpful to me for further consideration. I don't think I have what I need on that question.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion also then? Well, we didn't get a second yet, so we'll hold that.
Sure, I was going to say, I think for, for me, I still have, my reading of the variance laws is that the uniqueness needs to relate to shape, soil, and topography in addition to the hardship, so I feel like I haven't seen enough related to the shape, soil, and topography issues for a variance. I think that when we say that the uniqueness is related to the historic value of the home, we are opening the door to considering historic preservation as part of this variance hearing. And if we're saying that, the reason that we should be considering a variance based on the uniqueness of the historic character of the site is why we should grant the variance, I feel that part of the discussion is, would adding this addition to the side of it and removing part of one of the brick gables on the side still be preserving the historic character if that is the vehicle by which we are sort of granting the variance, and we're finding that we're kind of getting over the threshold for a variance? So that's, I feel like, sure, it's not a part of zoning, but if we're using the historic character as the unique aspect of the home, and that's the reason we should be considering a variance, then I feel like we, we could have conversation about whether we're actually meeting that threshold through this project.
Okay.
And in that case, I feel like we would need more information about what the outside of the structure would still look like, but I feel like for a shape, soil, and topography, I don't feel like I have enough to meet those thresholds.
Okay.
And I don't want to ask for more information and incur additional costs to do more plans and renderings if that's not something that-
Mr. Hearn?
Yeah.
This is a discussion now amongst the members. Okay, so there's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Okay, that motion fails because there's no second. Is there any other motions before, that a member would like to make?
I'm trying to figure out what it would be.
Take your time. Paul, do you have any motion you'd like to make?
I'm really torn here because I do agree with Judith Howard that this house is a historical gem, and I do not want to see it torn down. I feel that if this board, I mean, we're talking about a piece of history that can never be replaced, a house that's over two-hundred years old, that sits, that has sat in that landscape in Norwood for more than two-hundred years. I honestly feel that, that if the board closes the hearing and the applicant's request is denied, we have no demolition by law, he can tear that house down next week, and I feel like that's a loss, you know, for the town.
I think we do, Sarah, don't we have something regarding demolition of the house? No? Not one, we just had up on Chapel Court, this is different.
At best.
Yeah.
At best. Oh, you mean for historic preservation or just rebuilding?
No, just rebuilding.
Yes, so anybody could demolish a house and rebuild, provided they follow parameters relating to like the footprint of the original structure and stuff.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I, this, Mr. Chairman, I feel like that this house is in the hands of this board right now. Because if this was in Lexington or Concord, this would not be happening. But we don't have these bylaws to protect these historical homes, it's not in place in the Norwood bylaws. So I think that what the board decides to do, to do tonight will, will tell us what's going to happen with the future of this home.
Mr. Chairman-
Yeah, thank you, Paul, yes.
On that point, I think that's where I'm struggling, because I would, I would like to see this happen, but I'm constrained by the authority that we have under the statute because this is a variance, it's not a special permit, it's, it's, you know, you have two questions. One, is there authority to grant the variance, which is what I'm struggling with? And then once you get over that hurdle, do we want to exercise our discretion to grant the variance? And I can say sure on number two, but the question is, do we have the authority? And our zoning bylaws don't specifically address this, to give us the added discretion here about, you know, owing to the particular land or structures, and the nexus of the unique nature of the structure rendering that hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or the appellant. It is not a hardship to the town, that's not the statutory language. So I'm feeling constrained by whether we even have the authority to grant the variance, so I think it would be helpful, maybe a motion to inquire of Town Council on this question of, you know, the historicity of structures and what the necessary nexus is to the hardship.
Well, taking that out, and you raised some good points, but taking the historical aspect of this out, you're increasing one hundred percent where the zoning bylaw says fifty percent, and without substantial detriment to the public good, well, I think an increase like that is detrimental to the public good, just how I look at it. But we certainly have the authorities, you know, a variance is a high standard, and Shannon brought up the fact that she does not believe that it meets the first, you know, I have my little cheat sheet here, the first one, for first criteria regarding the sort of initial shape of topography, we heard nothing really that convinced Shannon that that was there. But that all being said, it seems to me that the board wants some more, and then I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that the board wants more time to deliberate over this matter and receive some more information from the applicant. Am I sensing that correctly from the board? Okay, so if I may, we'll make a motion to table this and ask the applicant to provide to the board renderings of the proposed addition with the correct footprint, with the elevations, and a simple floor plan, just showing the breakdown, nothing, just not looking for something big, but where the bedrooms and living rooms are going to be located, and how the attachment is going to be attached to the house, and how much demolition of that side wall will be necessary, and how will you protect if it was to approve that side wall? Because here's the challenge you have there. It's over two-hundred years old, and you're going to start removing some brick, and there's a great possibility that that whole wall could collapse. It's, it's, it's a, it's a difficult task. So I think we would, we would need that, and a, and an updated plan certified by Mr., I guess, or an engineer or surveyor that chose the correct dimensions. And so that would be my suggested motion. And I would also just put this out there that perhaps a proponent, I heard talk about an L off the back of the house, perhaps that might satisfy some needs, some people by saving that wall that we have heard some concerns about, and I didn't see the house before the L was taken down, but I have been going down that street for over thirty years because my wife grew up in Cross Street, and perhaps rather than go horizontal, we add the L and out to the back, and that, that preserves the whole historical perspective coming down the street. Again, that's just a suggestion, not a requirement, but a suggestion.
So your motion is to continue-
Continue the public hearing and-
June is-
To the June's meeting, June sixth meeting at seven o'clock at the Norwood Senior Center, and the applicant will provide us with the items that I stated.
Second.
Okay, I can't make the motion, would someone move that? Paul, Paul moves that motion?
I make the move.
Yep, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Kate. Okay, Paul?
Um, yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes no. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
And Mr. Musto, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a few more items. That was continued until June, for those of that are here and watching. So we do have the-
Steven.
We do have the-
I need to call you here.
No, you don't.
We do, we do have the meeting minutes of three fourteen twenty-three and three twenty-eight twenty-three. I do want to comment on the meetings from three twenty-eight twenty-three. I did have some changes that I did made, and I made them very late today also, so I would ask that a motion to table the meeting minutes from March twenty-eight twenty-two three of the zoning boards, so all the members will have an opportunity to see my changes and see if they're in agreement with them. I did view the entire meeting today, and so I did make some changes so that you're aware of. So I'll entertain a motion to table the meetings from March twenty-eight twenty-two three of the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, Rachel.
Yes.
Paul. Mary Kate.
I might have lost it.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Paul, we're tabling the meeting minutes of March twenty-eighth twenty-two three. Yes, and the chairperson votes yes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty-two three?
Mr. Chair, I had some comments that I did not have an opportunity to incorporate.
Okay.
So I would move to table to the next meeting.
Okay, so Ms. Churchill has moved to table the meeting minutes of March fourteenth twenty-two three for some suggested changes.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon.
Yes.
Paul, we're tabling the-
Yes.
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Yes, and the chairperson votes yes. So both meeting minutes are tabled until our next meeting, June sixth. Tabled from the last meeting was the organization of the board for, from May of twenty-two three till April thirtieth of twenty-two four. So I will open up the nominations for chairman for the next year of the zoning board of appeals.
I would nominate Mike Sheen for chair.
There's been a nomination of Mike Sheen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paul and Shannon. Are there any other nominations for chairperson? Seeing that, I close that nomination. Paul in favor of Mike Sheen as the chairperson for the next year?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And yes, and I thank my fellow members for their support and faith in me. We did, when we adjusted, came out with our rules, and made a position for clerk to assist a planning department and the chairman, and sit in when the chairman is not available. So I will now open up the nominations for clerk to the zoning board of appeals for twenty-two four, twenty-two three, twenty-two four session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mary Kate Daly for clerk.
There's been a nomination by Ms. Greenwell of Mary Kate Daly for clerk, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rachel. Are there any nominee, any further nominations for clerk of the preserving board of appeals? Hearing and seeing none, I close that. For Ms. Greenwell, Ms. Churchill?
Miss Daly.
I mean, Miss Daly, I'm sorry, Miss Daly?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize. Paul for Ms. Daly as the clerk?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Greenwell?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Daly votes yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And I would neglect to note that we're so fortunate, the town has made a great decision and named a new planning director and also of community development, Ms. Sarah Dixon. So Sarah, congratulations, and I hope we'll continue to see you and seek your support because you've been just wonderful as long as I've been here, and I think I can speak for the board, but it's one of probably the best deployments, I believe, the town has made. So I want to say that and thank you.
We vote yes.
Yes, we have a vote, we vote yes.
I will continue to support the ZBA. My goal for the department is that planning staff cross-train on more boards so that we've got multiple people who can capably serve each, each board. So you may be seeing more of the assistant town planning as well as myself as director.
Yeah.
And I'll have a name to report to you very shortly of who's the new assistant director.
All right, awesome. And just before you adjourn, and I'm putting this on you as a planner, I really think we have to address that historical perspective of our zoning, and then also how the two that we just had, three, three point one point five A one conflicts with four point one point one, the issue we just had, so there's some comments, and I know you've got your hands full, but-
No, definitely.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of other communities have adopted demolition delay bylaws, and, you know, it's something that we absolutely should explore and see what might be appropriate for town.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else, anyone? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Rachel, seconded by Mary Kate. Paul, we're adjourning. Paul, thumbs up for the adjournment?
Yes.
Mary Paul, yes, Rachel?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That concludes the meeting of the zoning board of appeals.